This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 4 p.m. Tuesday, 2021 in room 137 of the Edison Building. As posted, we are convened earlier than our usual starting time as we do every year on National Night Out so folks may attend neighborhood gatherings. The Board acknowledges this site and all PRS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the secret land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/isd535 where the live stream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Here.
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Chair Marvin?
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Here.
And Treasurer Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved. 3.0, comments to the Board. At this time, we welcome those individuals who have signed up to provide input to the Board regarding issues that fall within the Board's authority. Procedures and prohibited conduct are posted, so as you know, this is not an opportunity to speak to an audience or the community, and comments are not livestreamed. Issues involving personnel negotiations and protected student data are not allowed. And obviously, any kind of personal attack, abusive language, or disruptive behavior is neither useful nor productive, and it will not be tolerated. This is a time for the Board to listen, and generally, we will not respond, but we'll be happy to connect with speakers later if they request further clarification or conversation. Each speaker will have three minutes, and Ms. Severson will keep track of the time.
This is a 10 minute meeting. We will have a 10 minute meeting. We will have a 10 minute meeting.
Board member committee updates. This is an information item. Any board members have a report on work that you were doing on your committee? Right then, 4.02, comprehensive plan to keep students safe, COVID-19 and variant precautions. This is an information item. Dr. Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can get some help bringing a PowerPoint up, please? Okay, thank you. The purpose of the update here tonight is actually not to present any recommendations to the board. It's to give the board a sense of the issues that we are grappling with as we look toward the start of the 2021-2022 school year. The board has a meeting on the 17th at which we will be bringing recommendations in the areas that I'm going to walk you through right now. Just because I know that face coverings are much on people's minds and the board had a robust discussion and made a decision about our youngest learners at its last meeting, I want to let you know that after I give you a sense of the big picture that we are looking at, I'll briefly come back to that question of face coverings in that larger context and then we can throw it open. The primary thing that we are looking for from board members today are the issues that you want us to be particularly attentive to, the issues that are particularly of concern to you, so that when we bring you a recommendation on the 17th, we can do so with awareness of the things that are top of your minds. So, with that, there are really three big-picture areas that we are thinking about as we begin to think about how we keep our students safe in the midst of a continuing pandemic in which a new and increasingly dangerous variant of the virus, the Delta variant, is spreading widely in our community. So, the first is, how are we going to actually monitor the strategy as a whole over time? And that's really, really a critical issue. That's assessing and adjusting the big-picture strategy. That's category one. Category two is preventing and mitigating spread. How are we going to actually keep our learners, our staff, people who are engaged in our community, safe from the coronavirus? And three is responding once we actually have an infection of the COVID-19 virus identified. So, briefly walking through each of those three, again with an eye toward your meeting on the 17th, when we'll be bringing some recommendations to you. The first item with assessing and adjusting the strategy, and I have had many conversations with people who have both been supportive of and challenging of the strategies that we've taken to date, and a constant theme has been, what are your metrics and what are your sources of information? And so, one of the things we want to be doing between now and your next meeting is being very clear, what are the metrics that we're going to be looking at as it applies at the community level and at other levels, and what are the sources of expertise and information that we are going to recommend our school district continue to rely upon? There have been metrics and there have been sources of information that we've been paying attention to throughout the pandemic. We want to make sure that we are current in those resources that we'll be relying upon. So, who are the expert organizations and potentially even individuals? What are the community-level metrics that we're going to be thinking about? What are the district-level metrics as in Rochester Public Schools? And then, very importantly, what approach are we going to take to testing individual staff and students? So, that's our first category. How will we know how we're doing as we get into the new school year? The second is really a critical issue, much on many people's minds, as, for instance, Mayo Clinic here in our hometown has made some important decisions about vaccination and their employees. What should be our requirements and process in Rochester Public Schools regarding the vaccination status of both students and staff? So, that's our second category, that we're thinking, second issue in that category. And then finally, an issue that I think is important because I think a lot of us candidly are dismayed to need to be wearing masks again, because I think we had hoped we would be out of this stage, but we know that the CDC and other organizations are strongly recommending it. And so, as we go forward, which aspects of our strategy should be policy, which the board owns and considers at its meetings, and which aspects of the strategy should the board consider procedure and essentially charge me and our team and our leaders in our schools with monitoring on an ongoing basis? Unfortunately, this is going to be with us for a while. And so, how much should rest in your meetings? Because every time you want to make a decision, if it's in policy, we need to do it in an open meeting with all of the requirements that that involves. So, that's our first category of issues that we'll be thinking about over the next two weeks and on which we invite your thoughts tonight. weeks and on which we invite your thoughts tonight. The second category, of course, is probably the most familiar, because we've been at it now for quite a while, preventing and mitigating the spread of the virus. We have worked with Olmsted County in the past with really striking success to make vaccination clinics available. We do have a good number of older students who are not yet fully vaccinated, although we have very high percentages. And if and when vaccines are available for younger students, the question, of course, with parental decision, is would we make those clinics available? So vaccination clinics, important issue. Face coverings, we talked about that during the last board meeting. It remains obviously an important issue going forward, and I'll briefly comment on that after we get through these, the next two slides. Social distancing, as you know, staff in our schools went to great lengths in lunchrooms, in classrooms, and other settings to keep kids generally six feet apart, but we want to look at the guidance and make sure that we are adhering to what is best practice in that area. Right now, we do not have other adults, which was my simple way of putting it, but especially community providers who provide a lot of services to our kids, and volunteers. It was a really eloquent overview of the power of reading with kids. We don't have volunteers and tutors coming into our schools right now, and so that's an important issue that we'll be considering as well. Extracurricular activities, we know that sports, performing arts are among the most powerful things that we offer kids. We also know that sports in particular were opportunities where a lot of transmission occurred in the past, and so we'll be looking at extracurriculars. Field trips, we have not done, we did not do many field trips, almost none, in the 2020, 2021 school year. I will tell you, over the summer, in our Summer of Discovery program, the field trips that Rochester kids took were awesome. They were out, and I met some of them. They were at the airport, they were moving the, they taught me the word, the yoke on the plane. And this is a powerful educational experience that we haven't been having our kids have for obvious reasons, and so we want to take a look at field trips. Then there's this big question of large gatherings, school assemblies, staff meetings, larger events. What are the recommendations that we would be receiving in two weeks, and what would the strategy be that we'd recommend? You know, we have a fantastic facilities and operations team in all of our schools and at the district level, and they have worked really, really hard to keep our schools safe in terms of our sanitation practices. Ventilation is something that is, the more we learn about the virus, the more we learn it's really, really critical, and so that's an additional category there. Substitute teachers, in the previous year, we constrained where substitutes could substitute in our district. That creates a lot of challenges with filling the slots, because we're saying you can only go to these schools. Can we go back to the point where a substitute with the license can teach in any of our schools when there's an availability? So that's another issue. And then finally, I think we've all learned, the critical issue of training and communication. How are we explaining clearly and consistently the strategies that we're putting in place? So that's our second category that we're thinking about. And our third is when we actually have a breakthrough infection or an outbreak, how do we handle it? Many of the procedures, like for quarantine, are predefined by the Department of Public Health, the Minnesota Department of Public Health. So there's a lot of stuff in this category that we neither need nor have guidance or flexibility on. But a big one, though, is when students have to quarantine, because there's been a COVID infection, how do we keep them learning? Because we don't want them just to stop paying attention to reading and math and science and history. And so how can we provide instruction when students or staff are in quarantine? Sometimes the person feels fine but is required to quarantine due to either, well, due to infection status or other factors. How do we continue to keep that a learning opportunity for kids? So that's one big issue. Second, and this seems a little in the weeds, but I think it's a fairly fundamental issue for us, when a staff person gets COVID, should that person need to use their own sick leave? Because in a strict sense, it is being sick, like when you are, when you have the flu or something. Or should we be actually not charging that leave to the individual sick leave but finding another source of funding to pay for it? The logic of the sick leave argument is, as I just said, COVID is a sickness like any sickness. The logic of not charging it to sick leave is we are asking our educators to go in and teach kids during a pandemic, knowing the pandemic is there. And so to ask them to use their sick leave to cover it when we're asking them to go in is deserving of some consideration. So that's, whoops, an additional issue there. And I think that we are, that must mean that I'm actually through that. So it's good, giving myself the hook. Let me just say a brief thing about masks. The board made a difficult decision in approving masking for our youngest learners, grades two, ages two, up to 12, because no vaccines are available for that group, therefore they don't have the protection of those vaccines. We've always, and the expert recommendation has been that kids between zero and two don't, have never required masks, we've never recommended it. We did recommend it be recommended, as one of our speakers tonight noted, but not required for older students. That was the recommendation that I felt was prudent then. I still feel it's prudent for us now, in part because we don't have any of those students or staff in our schools. And so we have, through the 17th, to look at the science, to look at the data, and bring back a recommendation for you on the degree to which all staff and potentially our middle and high school students ages 12 and above would be required to wear face coverings. We're now recommending them as per your policy. And that's going to be an important issue. Since our meeting last week, Olmsted County has moved from the moderate level of community spread, you know, into that substantial level. And so we've moved up. Olmsted County's looking at that, the city is looking at that. We've seen some important community organizations. I mentioned Mayo, the University of Minnesota Rochester has also made a decision about face coverings. So I mostly want to tell you and the community that we appreciate the need to be super attentive to keeping all of our learners and staff safe. And I'm glad we have two weeks, because this has moved so quickly, that I am confident we will know more in two weeks than we do today about the recommendation that we should be bringing you. But I do anticipate that face coverings would be included in this larger comprehensive strategy that we would be sharing at your meeting on the 17th. And with that, we'd open floor to, you know, any questions and guidance. And of course, I'll ask my colleagues in the cabinet to jump up and help me out if one month into my job I get quickly out of my depth with some of the details.
Any questions or questions or comments from the board? I, oh, go ahead, Ms. Nathan.
So now that Longfellow has been back in the building for a little while, what do we know about staff use of masks, the choices staff are using with the voluntary mask requirement?
The question was about our one school that is open, Longfellow Elementary. I connected with the principal, and she had not done a careful, exact survey, but she said her sense was between a third and half of the staff are choosing to wear masks all the time, and others are putting them on and off, and felt that that strategy was working, this was yesterday, to be really clear, working for them at the present time to make that decision individually. And it might make sense to be, between now and your meeting on the 17th, a bit more scientific, with a small s, in looking at how staff have felt they could perform and what their attitudes are in that one school since it's open. But it's less than half, but at least the principal felt that it has been, it has worked well thus far to make it discretionary for staff to make that decision. My sense, and this was a brief conversation, is that part of how teachers are doing it is when they're in close proximity, they're putting the mask on, and when they're in the front of the classroom, distant, that they're actually taking it off so that they're a little more audible. But I don't want to overstate the one conversation I've had with the principal since that school just started. The one exchange, I should say it was an email exchange, so I'm really clear, but it was a good detailed email exchange.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Nathan, I had that same question about Longfellow, so Ms. Amundson.
I think there's a lot of questions embedded in your presentation, so I'm not quite sure where to start. Early on, you addressed the point of whether or not this should be you and the staff's decision or the school board's decision. And I'm feeling both ways at once, because for one thing, if situations change quickly and we're only meeting every two weeks, that makes no sense to wait until we meet or to call an emergency meeting every time something changes. But on the other hand, it's such a highly charged politicized discussion, decision, and it seems to me that that is our job as school board members, to A, reflect the priorities of our community, B, make decisions for what's best for our community, and C, to take the fallout on behalf of our staff. That's our job. And so whenever practicable, I think that we should make the decision, even if it's just ratifying a decision that's already been made. You know, we can perhaps authorize the staff to make a decision until the next school board meeting if it wouldn't be seen as potentially reversing your decision, which, you know, is a potential drawback of that. I don't think it makes sense to wait. Now, just this afternoon, Olmsted County has announced that all people to their buildings will be masked.
Oh, I hadn't heard that yet.
I think it just came out, you know, 3:00 PM or something. So, you know, I think that we could all go home with one decision tonight, and tomorrow the conditions could be completely different again. And I know a lot of people think that that means, you know, changing the guidance means we don't really know what's going on or what we want to do. I hear that from a lot of people. Inconsistencies create a lack of confidence in the leadership, but I think that acknowledging that conditions change quickly, what we're learning about the virus is still scientifically changing. It takes a long time to do studies, and so I think we need to be ready to react swiftly. I don't know personally that it makes sense for us to wait two more weeks to make a decision on this. That's two weeks that, you know, the virus could be doing its thing, and I think it makes more sense to authorize you and your staff to react more quickly than the school board can react.
Ms. Workman.
Yes. Do we still have any summer school programs going on in our buildings with students?
We don't. Our only, to my knowledge, our only operation right now is Longfellow, our 4515 school. I'll just say, Dr. Amundson, I would be recommending you shouldn't wait if we had other buildings open now too, but because we don't, we have a period. So it's not just the need for more time, it's because we won't have additional folks there. And from what we know now, the situation at Longfellow is pretty sound. Knock on plastic. Yeah, sorry, Director Workman.
That was my question.
Mr. Barlow.
I'm comfortable with the strategy components that have been presented this evening, and it does allow for the assessing and adjusting to occur, to which I think Director Amundson just referenced. And so as far as what you're looking for from us, you would like for us to, not only at this board meeting, but perhaps leading up to the 17th, are there additional things you would request or desire from the board?
I think, Dr. Barlow, many of, you've already given us some. It's, first of all, keeping you updated on the issues that we're thinking about, because none of those were recommendations, they were naming the issues. We will bring you a recommendation on the 17th. Right now in Rochester, this is a matter of board decision making, so you would need to change that to change that. So we're going to bring you a recommendation on all of those things and a few other things besides. I added that last point because do we want to continue to maintain that practice of this being really the board's decision making going forward, given how fluid this situation is? I would recommend that you also think about that on the 17th, so that after the 17th, we have some level of clarity on what the board's role is and what you're charging me with. So there are not more specific things than what's on your mind, what are you concerned about, what do you want to make sure we're paying attention to? Tonight is not for any, at least in my recommendation, though the board could always choose to take action. My recommendation is not for action, because we do have time yet before students return to our buildings, but to be giving you as board members and also the community that's watching us, a sense of the fact that in a very fluid situation, we're trying to do our homework, and we're trying to actually make sure we have a comprehensive strategy, of which face coverings are a part, but not the extent.
Ms. Amundson.
Another thing I'd like you to have on your radar then is we've been contacted by some parents whose children are around age 12. And in middle school buildings, there can be under 12s in some grades and over 12s in other grades, and that concerns me. I guess it's just have that be part of your recommendations, keeping in mind that it may be more like an elementary building if anybody in the building is under 12.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That wasn't on the list, though it's very much on our minds, and I think we can add that to the list for next time. We definitely know for our middle schools, and I've heard from some of those parents and staff too, that that's a challenge, where you have some kids in the building who would be 11, and some who are 12 and over, and they would potentially have different status. Were we to shift our face covering strategy to a different approach than what you proved last week, that might not be an issue, but I don't want to seem to prejudge that right now, because the point is to really make sure that we pay attention to the science and listen to, you know, educators and others between now and your next meeting.
Thank you.
So, we'll just keep pointing. I think the plan that you have in place makes absolute sense. It's intelligent, it's specific, it's going to be easy to communicate. We do have a couple of weeks to see how this situation continues to unfold. Foolishly, I think, I was hoping that Olmsted County would remain an island untouched by this variant. As things were going out of control in Texas and Florida and other places, I kept thinking, we're doing it right here, and we're going to avoid this. It appears now that maybe we won't. In two weeks, we should have a better idea of how that looks. That will still give our families two weeks before most schools open. Schools will have time to prepare, our students will have time to prepare, their families will. And I know that you are in constant contact with the healthcare professionals who have the latest data and the most important metrics, statistics, you know, about how this is affecting adults and kids. And that's the thing that concerns me the most, is that I think, like so many of us, I was thinking, well, our littlest ones, they're going to be fine. I mean, if there was a blessing, it's this, it didn't seem to be harming our little kids so much. And sadly, that may be changing. We don't know if it's going to be happening here or not, but that's what we're hearing. So I appreciate the work that you and others are doing, and I think it's a good plan. Ms. Nathan, and then Ms. Workman.
One additional item for the meeting on the 17th, if it's possible. If we do have any prevalence data, either from Olmsted County or within our buildings, if you would have that to share, that might put things in context as well.
And Ms. Workman.
Yeah, this is a communication process question, so if we have ideas, do you want us to send them directly to the superintendent, or should we send them to the executive committee, which is the superintendent chair and vice chair?
I would defer to the chair on that one. Both of them get to me, so.
Good call. Your choice.
Okay, thank you.
There's the decision.
I would just say that not just board members, but we, I know, there's, people have very strong feelings about this. We really are listening, and we perceive the difficulty of this decision on both sides. For some people, it's a no-brainer on both sides, but most of the rest of us are like, this is really hard. And so I want to ensure people are grappling with that as we try and make these decisions over the next couple of weeks. Well, develop a recommendation for you in two weeks.
And I just, I think discussion's almost at a close, but we are receiving, board members are receiving emails from parents especially, who feel very strongly one way or the other, strongly that children should not be asked to mask, and others who are saying that everyone in a building should be masked. We hear you, we understand the emotion beneath that, and decisions that this district makes can't be based just on emotion. Whatever decisions we make, we will try to make the school experience the best we possibly can for your children, for your grandchildren, for our staff, for their families, because we know that the emotions are out there. But we're reading what you send in. This is not going to be a vote. If it were, I could tell you right now which If it were, I could tell you right now which side we've been getting many, many more emails about, but it's not going to be a vote. But we do hear what you're saying, and we care. Anything else? All right, we will move on then to our consent agenda. 5.0, are there any items to be removed for separate consideration? Hearing none?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved, and we have one retirement this month.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As is, as some of you know, our tradition, the superintendent has a chance to recognize these fantastic employees of Rochester Public Schools. The challenge for me, which I regret, is that, at least the three I've recognized thus far, I didn't ever get to know. But I heard great things about Adele Bautch earlier today. She's been an early childhood special education teacher at Mighty Oaks Early Learning School, and she'll be retiring effective August 9th, and she's been with the district for 14 years. And so, we thank her for her service. And I want to just ask my colleagues, did I say her name right? Because I don't want to say her name. Bach. So, nobody gets Peckel right, so I feel her pain. But I don't want to say it. Bach. Thank you. So, Adele Ruth Bach. And thanking her for her service with our youngest learners, which is where we know all the magic starts.
6.01, approval of technology purchase through emergency connectivity funds. We were briefed on this at our last meeting, and this is an action item. I'll read the resolution, and then if there's discussion, we can have it after it has been moved and seconded. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase of 4,000 devices for the total of up to $1,128,000 contingent upon receiving ECF dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions, or is there any discussion? Dr. Peckel? Nothing?
No, Madam Chair, this is an item that we were talking this morning. As we begin to further enhance the board's processes, I think in future might go on the consent agenda, given that you'd been briefed on it. But in keeping with just clear process, we kept it here. But it really is an exciting opportunity for us that doesn't have any downside if we don't get the funding.
Right. Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 6.02, update on RPS online school. This is an information item. Dr. Peckel.
Dr. Marvin, and board members, I'm going to call Jackie Peterson, who's our executive director of elementary and secondary education, up to give you an initial overview of a really exciting opportunity that we have happening here in Rochester. We are going to be going boldly where some school districts have gone before, but where ours hasn't, and not many have. And that's creating a fully online K-12 school, RPS online. One of the things I'm proud of, one of many things I'm proud of Rochester for is that we aren't just taking the difficult lessons we learned about distance learning during the worst of the pandemic and just saying, phew, let's forget all that and just go back to only instruction in a bricks and mortar setting. We are going to continue to lean into that option, because we've seen many of our families and students value it. It will continue to be an option during and beyond the pandemic. That said, it is a huge undertaking to pull this together well in the midst of all the other challenges we've got. And so, one of the things I know I said to the board in your interview of me during the search for an interim superintendent is I believe school districts don't often enough take chances and learn from what doesn't work and scale up what does. So, this is an instance in which we are going to offer a great program in a month to those students who are enrolled in RPS online. But there's a lot of work to get done between now and then. So, I want to thank Jackie and her team for pulling that work together. I would hope that this could be the first of a number of briefings for you on the progress of this effort, because it is very much, it's not at all in its infancy, because I'm told people have been talking about it here for years and years and years. And I was thrilled to get here and find out that actually we decided to move forward. Probably the first decision I made as your interim superintendent is to say, though, let's not just do it in the elementary grades where we knew we had some kids and families. Let's offer it all the way through K-12. Because I think for those families that are considering it, they need to know it's available throughout the educational continuum if they want to make this their preferred mode. So, Jackie, if you can give the board a sense of where we are in this work in progress.
Thank you, Chair Marvin, Dr. Peckel, and members of the board. I am really excited to talk with you tonight about the online school and give you a brief update. We have talked about this for years, some of us more than others, and we've always hit roadblocks or just thought, this is not something we could achieve. And we're at a point where all of our teachers have experienced teaching online, and many to a great level of success. We, just about all of our students have experienced online school, and they know that it works for them or that they prefer being in person. And our families have experienced it as well, so the timing is perfect. We need to, as Dr. Peckel said to me in one of my first meetings with him, we need to be in this space. So, we are working toward that goal. I was both thrilled and kind of terrified when Dr. Peckel said, let's fund the secondary piece too, because while we had pieces on deck, this is the greatest challenge. And I'll share a little bit with that, about that with you as I share the PowerPoint tonight. I do want to recognize Andrew Newman from our team. Andrew, as you heard before, and I think actually he provided you a PowerPoint when we were still virtual that was at the speed of light and had a million pieces, moving parts on his PowerPoint. I don't have that tonight, so you're welcome. So, the slide before you is the current enrollment in our RPS online school. I just got the numbers while sitting over on the side here. We're actually at 122 now for elementary, which is exciting. We've grown a little bit. We've gotten 10 more students in our middle school program, and we're at the same point with our high school kids. So, these totals, we expect to grow. We know that we have students who have indicated an intent to participate, but they have not yet enrolled. And that happens, that's not a surprise. We have that happen with students that come to us from other school districts, that it takes them some time to get through the process. And then I do have a footnote that we, in addition to these students who have indicated a full-time preference, we have 153 kids right now, and that could be a little bit more as we speak, who have indicated a desire to be part-time. We're referring to part-time because supplemental can be confusing to people. But that means that these students plan at high school to be partially in-person and partially online. So, we're currently working to reach out to every one of these students. The staff in my office, along with some of the high school staff, are calling and talking to families to find out, what classes were you intending to take online? So that we can start to build a master schedule. And that's where the terrified piece comes in, because anyone who's worked in a high school knows that that's a huge jigsaw puzzle to solve, but we are up to the task. We have a few people who are master schedulers helping on the side, because Andrew can't do all of this by himself. So, we have some of the registrars at the high school who have raised a hand to help. Some counselors who have indicated a willingness to work a few extra days. And a master scheduler who is now with us at the elementary level in a leadership position, who's willing to take this on. So, it's many, many hands making this work, and we appreciate every one of those folks. So, someone's clicking for me. I'm not sure who, but the magic is happening. Okay, so staffing-wise, we early on had committed, I think it's in the back room, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm not doing it.
Can't reach it.
Okay.
So, the teaching positions, early on, we had committed to the elementary portion. So, we were able to post the elementary positions for transfer. So, the teachers who are in our case six positions have taught with us already over the past several years and have transferred from in-person positions into the online school. We are currently working to hire full-time and part-time FTE. This has been taking quite a bit of our energy this week to interview a large number of candidates who are both internal and who are reaching out to us from Minnesota and beyond. And so, the way that's working is some of our staff who are maybe not a full FTE can request to be increased in their FTE and pick up maybe like a .2 French, or I'm making that up, but that we have some fractional positions that people were able to build into their current FTE and increase their FTE. We also have a few staff members who have indicated they're a 1.0, but they're willing to do an overload and pick up like a .2 math class, which we're happy to have happen when we have just a .2 need or a .4 need. And then we do have, we have interviewed people who are teachers who are licensed in Minnesota and, but not in our district. So, we're able to work with those folks as well. And then in terms of support positions, we have already brought a counselor on board. This was an internal transfer, a full-time counselor who has extensive high school experience that will be super helpful with scheduling and piecing together and looking at students' transcripts. We have a social worker, and we have a .5 instructional coach on board, and those were all internal transfers. We currently have posted not an office manager, but an off-schedule clerical. And that person will not only support the online school, but also our summer school, which is a big piece of ongoing support and work. We'll be interviewing for that position shortly. We can really use that person's help as we bring, continue to bring kids on board, students on board. We've also, we're also in the process of hiring special education teachers, so we can meet student IEPs and a full-time EL teacher based on the current enrollment. So, that's just a little update on where we're at with staffing. And then finally, operations and marketing. So, we are busy right now doing professional development with the current online staff. We want to make sure we meet those needs. Many of them are coming to us very, very well-versed in teaching online from their previous experience, but we want to provide more support in that area. And we've also paid online teachers, RPS online teachers, to write curriculum earlier in the summer while other folks were writing curriculum. We have designated classroom and office space at Overland. We recognize that once we're not in a pandemic, that one portion of online school may include coming together in person now and again. That could be for a field trip. It could be for a science lab. It could be just for a small group. It could be for a celebration. But we want to have a place where families can come, or students can come to meet. And we also want to have a space for teachers to come if they have a need to teach onsite. This is also where we're housing the cumulative folders for students and these kinds of things too. Our supplies are all coming to that location. Fortunately, there's some space that Overland will have to reevaluate after this year. The RPS online school is also engaging in step into learning with the other elementary schools, and this will give a chance for our students who are enrolled to meet their teachers live. It will also be an opportunity to distribute devices to families that need them. And then the last bullet here, the communications department developed a beautiful postcard that went out to about 2,000 households, Rochester residents, and the surrounding community. This did generate quite a bit of interest. So, we are connecting back with families who've indicated that they'd like to know more. And we have noticed an uptick in homeschool families interested in shared time and joining us for a bit of instruction and then continuing their work at home with their children. So, we're opening up a door and connecting with our homeschool families, and I think that's going to be a very, very positive event for us. So, that is a brief update, and I recognize you might have some questions, and I'll do my best to answer them.
Dr. Garcia.
Yes, thank you. I think this is such a great opportunity, especially as it increases accessibility in the district. I just, for me, a more point of reference for people watching or here in the audience, would you just mind letting us know when is the expected start date of this launching? And where do we need, when does all this need to come together to be ready, 100% ready for a start date?
Our expected start date is the same day as all of our other students in person. So, that, so we're working feverishly to be ready for that. We are confident that we will be ready for that. The step into learning for elementary will be the same dates that the step into learning for all the elementaries, which is the first two days, the 30th and 31st of August. So, we are ready to roll when everybody else is ready to roll, and we're looking forward to it.
Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Workman.
Excellent presentation. Quick question regarding, will these students be provided extracurricular opportunities? Additionally, though, is there any way of knowing at this point what the online student makeup is, be it based on gender, race, and/or ability linguistically and/or special needs? I did notice, and I commend your planning, in that you do have already a staff or support staff for a SED as well as EL. So, you must have some idea then in terms of the types of students who are taking advantage of this?
We do. Director Barlow, we have tracked, as we've enrolled the students, we're able to see exactly what we see when we're in a brick and mortar school. So, we know who will need EL services. We know who is on an IEP. We know the language is spoken, and that's how we've been able to designate the staffing, that EL 1.0 is based on how many students we have that will need EL support. We also have gifted information on gifted services, and we'll be staffing that as well. And to your point about extracurriculars, the extensive application process we did really helped us pre-plan, because a lot of these questions that are coming up, we needed to think about and respond to the state through our application process. Students can participate in extracurricular activities. They would do so at the school in their attendance area. So, they are not, you know, they are not prevented from doing sports or clubs, and they would just participate right at the school in their attendance area.
And then, as it relates to gender, ethnicity, free and reduced lunch, do you have any?
We do have all that data. I don't have it in front of me, but we do have it. And actually, Andrew Newman, as assistant principal of the online school, is able to, he could do a query and pull all of that information up right now, because the students are housed now in the entities that represent the elementary, middle, and high school. And when you see the enrollment update, you'll be able to see, you can currently see elementary, online school, middle school, online school, and high school. Yes.
Ms. Workman.
Yes, Dr. Peckel, you mentioned at the beginning that there has been some discussion about having an online school for quite a while. That happened, in fact, about 10 years ago. We were in the midst of a $10 million budget cut at the time. And one of the things that was really discussed at length was that online classes had to be smaller than traditional classes, and we could not afford it. Plus, there was always the, well, I have 32 kids in my class and you only have 20, and it's not fair. So, is that still true today?
Our class sizes will be the same as what they are in person.
I've kind of figured that, having been through all of the distance learning last spring. But I'm really glad to hear that this is something that will also be affordable as well as teachers having had experience doing it.
And, you know, I should point out that we have had online learning going on for quite some time. Stan D., math teacher at Century, has taught multivariable calculus to students at all three buildings at the same time. My own daughter taught a computer programming course from Mayo High School and taught to kids at JM and Century at the same time, and she loved that. We are going to be doing that with world languages in the next school year. I think you may have heard a little bit about that. You may recall, board members who have been here for a while, parent concern about not being able to offer, say, French 3 and 4 at one of our high schools, because we didn't, we had maybe eight or nine kids enrolled, and we couldn't run the class. We won't have to do that anymore, because we're going to be able to bring kids together virtually and continue to offer a full range of our world languages for four years. So, we've been able to capitalize on our ability to teach virtually and support our students' needs at the same time.
I have a follow-up. Can I follow up? So, the classes that you mentioned, they were, we had those classes because of a need, because there was a lack of student enrollment in one building to be able to offer it. But the online school, as I understand it, is different, because students who would maybe be in a school where the class would be offered now have the opportunity to do that online, whereas perhaps before, they would not have had that opportunity.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. I think what we're trying to do is serve students who have found that working remotely, or maybe even working virtually, but in a library at school, they've learned that for themselves, learning online suits their needs better. So, just because the class is offered in person, that doesn't mean that we're. So just because the class is offered in person, that doesn't mean that we're not offering it online as well.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Ms. Peterson, is there a deadline for enrollment where you're going to have to cut this off? Or will students be able to continue to enroll?
We had, we had that discussion today. We know because of the, of the, of the changing dynamics with the pandemic, that parents who thought they were going to go in person may be changing their mind based on how things are evolving with COVID. We want to be able to support students, and we don't want to turn students away. But at the same time, when we get to the final hour, especially with our secondary students where scheduling is, and higher, and, and staffing is much more complex, we'll have to make sure that we have space in, in, in the courses that we're offering. We have an easier time being more agile with our elementary classrooms. We did that throughout last year. You may or may not have known that throughout the course of the year, we did close some online, or we closed some in-person session, sections, when they got so small that we were able to redistribute the students and then added more online courses. So, online classrooms. So that's a long answer to say that we're going to do our very, very best to serve every family who comes to us and needs us, but at some point, we may need to, to cut that off. And I should also say that we're, this time around, this is not distance learning. We are, we are asking parents to stay the course if they go online school, that we want them to stay for the grading period. So if they wish to make a change back to in-person, that we would ask they wait for natural break, which is our grading, grading periods.
And Chair, I had, it was actually a two-part, but I didn't get the second part out. Is the staffing, particularly for the elementary, where I'm seeing some of the grades are quite high, is that set? Or will you potentially need to expand if you get more elementary, particularly third graders and fifth graders?
We may need to expand. We look at those numbers every day, not just for online, but for our in-person students as well, because enrollment changes, especially at kindergarten right now. It's, it's, it's growing in-person as well. So we look at our enrollment numbers and, and, and adjust. We, we work as a team, John Carlson, Carl Bachan, and actually the whole cabinet. We look at those numbers and make decisions on whether we need to add a section or move a section. And we're currently in a position where we believe we'd be able to add some online sections based on enrollment without impacting our overall FTE, that we might be able to shift some FTE.
From regular school to online.
Regular school, online.
Yep. Not, not making teachers teach two sections or something.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Garcia.
Yes, I just have one that's more like a logistics question. So if there's something that needs to be in-person, I know you've mentioned Overland, but I'm thinking of something like an IEP reevaluation or just an initial evaluation, are we transporting the kids to a place? Are they meeting at Overland? Are we going to, not we, but the evaluator going to the home? How, how do those things work?
That's a logistic we still have yet to work out. We, we have not talked about the evaluation process and exactly how that would work. We do have, you know, vans that we can use to transport students, thankfully. Even at the school level, they're able to do some transportation. We've talked about at high school, if a student wants to split their schedule and say be in-person for band and another sort of hands-on course like Project Lead the Way or something like that, that they could start their day at their high school, taking the bus if they are a bussler. And that they would then be able to stay at school if they prefer in a quiet workspace or transport themselves home. But we, we will work with them scheduling-wise so that they can take advantage of our bus system either, on either end.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Online.
We need a mascot, so if you would like to submit some ideas. Online otters, but otters is already taken.
That's cute, though. I like that. Okay, 6.03, the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and Discipline Data. This is an information item. Dr. Pakel.
Thank you, Dr. Marvin. I'm going to ask both Jackie to stay up there, and then Will Ruffin, who's our very new Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, to come up and join us for this discussion. And I'm going to give a bit of context before I ask Jackie and then Will to share their thoughts. And we're, we're expanding.
And Chris Lingan, Director of Elementary and Secondary, is also here.
That's fantastic. Chris, my apologies, I didn't know we were getting the dream team here. So this is, this is great. Directors of the Board, we are, as a school district, like many school districts in Minnesota, at the end of a compulsory, by mutual agreement, but somewhat compulsory adherence to an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to track disparities in discipline rates between white students and students of color. But I am very confident that for this board in this community, the end of that requirement doesn't mean the end of this commitment. And certainly, in my being here and being very new, I'm excited through the strategic planning process that this board authorized last week to go deeper into this work. And before I turn it over to Jackie to give you a sense, and, and maybe, Chris, of what the data has said in our most recent report, and then to ask Will, as somebody who has very recently been a teacher in our district and who now is assuming a leadership role of our strategic work at the system level, as you might guess I might do, I want to talk to you just really quickly about the research on discipline rates. It's one of the things I hope to be able to do over the course of my tenure here as interim superintendent, is to bring in that voice of what do we know from the field? And I want to try and do that briefly and conversationally. But if any of you want citations and want to talk about any of this, you know, I would love to nerd out with you. When we talk about discipline, very often, it becomes very unclear exactly what we're talking about. And in the research, it usually falls into three broad categories. And this is not necessarily exactly the way Minnesota or any state has done it. But when people study this stuff, there's office referrals, a kid is sent to the office, there's suspensions, and there's expulsions. There are other things, but those are the big buckets of what we're talking about. And in national studies, the primary things that kids get referred to are horseplay, which literally is the term, it's kind of dated, but messing around, rule violation, disruptiveness, cutting classes, cursing, bullying, sexual harassment, refusal to obey orders, fighting, defiance, vandalism. Those are some, some of the things. They all get lumped under this word, discipline. And the reason I wanted to highlight that is they're very different, the different types of behaviors that I just highlighted. But they often get into part of this, this swirl of, of information that's, that's called discipline. There's a large body of research that shows that when young people, starting in elementary school through high school, are cited for disciplinary infractions, they're charged with one of those things, it's strongly associated with worse outcomes individually at the school level and at the community level, that kids and schools that have a lot of disciplinary infractions get worse educational outcomes. Not surprising, but important to note. The discipline discussion connects to the academic discussion, though it's indirectly and the two are not often connected when we just look at the dataset. We're not going to be looking at academic data here in a moment, we're going to be looking at discipline data, but it connects to our teaching and learning mission in really, really important ways. A really important finding from the research that actually guided, first in the Obama administration, the US Department of Education, and then here at the state level, is the finding, which is so strong, I would almost say it's conclusive, but nothing really in education is conclusive in the same way it often is in the natural sciences. The same infractions are often treated differently along lines of race for kids. Not always, but at very high levels. So a kid, a white kid who does something is given a different consequence than a student of color. And we've seen that in study after study. There are exceptions to it, but that was the finding that drove this national conversation around discipline disparities. So for a long time, the first wave of trying to deal with this was what was called exclusionary discipline, pull them out. This was in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and it was the era of no, of zero tolerance policies. The, the research on that was terrible. It was not, it was proving not only to not reduce disciplinary infractions, but it was having negative outcomes socially, emotionally, educationally, and otherwise. That said, when kids are causing problems, you can't ignore it. And we certainly are not proposing that anybody should ignore it. And so the last decade, and we've seen nationally some really positive progress in reducing discipline disparities in, in some large national datasets, has really been a shift from exclusionary discipline, pull them out, to attempts to more broadly systematize what results in a disciplinary infraction, what really causes someone to get in trouble, and to create positive environments in which young people experience a sense of belonging, fairness, and connection. A lot of studies highlight the importance of classroom management. Are you helping that teacher really have a positive classroom with clear rituals and routines so kids don't actually get either tempted or distracted into behavior that would get them into trouble? Something that's called PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, to create school-wide rituals and routines that will actually have the whole school clear about what actually is good behavior. And then more recently, a growing emphasis on what is often called social-emotional learning, that would be helping the young people develop a sense of self-discipline, how I actually manage myself, which is sometimes a problem for me at age 53. And so moving those things. Undergirding all of those things is defining what is misconduct with greater precision so that you actually have clarity. If you're an assistant principal, you have a challenging job, you're busy, how do we actually know what really constitutes a problem? And then really pulling back from suspension as the, as the primary tool, especially for minor offenses. But that creates a talent, a challenge. If you tell a principal you can't suspend at all, you're taking a really important tool because we know that sometimes a student can be negatively impacting the learning of other kids in that class. And so that's been a, a real tension. Final point, and then I'll turn it over to folks here, and the board members won't be surprised that I'm going to say this at all, relationships. That really powerful research has shown that staff-student relationships, teacher-student relationships in particular, that are what my previous world would call developmental relationships, are clearly associated with reduced rates of disciplinary infractions. When we create those connections where kids feel seen, validated, understood, it doesn't immediately magically make everything go away, but it's a strong foundational aspect of having environments where kids feel that they're cared about and being treated fairly. In, in one of my favorite studies, some seventh graders were doing a writing assignment, and the researchers put, had their teachers write two different messages on the students' writing assignments. One was, I'm giving you these comments so you have feedback on your paper, just neutral, transactional. The other was, I'm giving you these comments because I have very high expectations and I know you can reach them. There were two groups of kids in this middle school, half-white, half-black, the teachers were all white. For the white kids who got the high expectations message, 61% of them chose to revise the essay to make it better if they got the neutral message, 81% chose to do it if they got the high expectations message. So it improved things for the white kids. For the African-American kids, 17% chose to revise the essay to improve it if they got the neutral message, 71% chose to do it if they got the high expectations message. But for our subject here tonight, the year later, in eighth grade, the African-American students who got that high expectations message from their seventh-grade teacher, one time had significantly lower rates of disciplinary infraction. And even more mind-blowingly, they went to college five and a half years later at significantly higher rates. I'm glad to walk you through that data if you're ever really interested in it. So with that as kind of a very big-picture overview of the importance of these issues, I'll turn it over to Jackie to start us off with a report on our most recent dataset. And then if board members are willing, I'd like to let my colleagues go through this full overview. And then what we'll do is we'll open it up to board member comments and questions. So, thank you.
Chair Marvin, Superintendent Pakel, and members of the board, thank you again for your time tonight. And Dr. Pakel, thank you so much for that wonderful introduction. A lot of what you spoke about is highlighted in the MDHR report, the final report that we shared with you in board docs. You've seen an update every, at the end of each of our three years. And I just want to say that there are ongoing efforts that have really benefited students and been proven to be great strategies that we will not let go of within that document that came from the work we did with MDHR. And we've even added some strategies in the final hours before we concluded our work with them because we recognize that our work is, we're still, we still have a lot of work to do in this area. And so we're pleased to talk about those things. I think at the end of the, of this PowerPoint, we've highlighted some of the ongoing work that, that we want you to be aware of. Things like, we have limited suspension. We do believe that having kids in class and not excluding kids is, is the best way for kids to be a part of a school community in a positive way. And so people in, in my office, Chris Lingan, for example, does communicate regularly with the principals and serves as a support for them when they are going through a disciplined situation, and, and is there to assure that, ensure that our students are not suspended for too many days, or, you know, that, that, that the discipline that is, that is handed out is, is appropriate. So I do want to thank Chris Lingan, he is our data guy. He's not just our data guy, but like I said, he serves as a support for our, our building principals when they run into an issue that they need help with, along with Kim McDonald, who is not with us tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris to go through the data.
Thank you, Jackie. As you look here, the data you're going to see is the Level 2 office referral, but you're also going to see some suspension data and then some police report also at the same time. I feel those are two things that you've asked for in the past that you've wanted to look at. And I think just to have more of that conversation of, we want to continue looking at Level 2 office referrals, we want to look at suspension data in the future. What exactly do you want us to make sure that we're focusing most of our time on? That represents obviously a mixture of learning models throughout the year. So when you go through this, understand the numbers aren't going to be able to compare. I know in the past, the board has liked to be able to compare how we've done last year, the year before that, and so forth. It'll be difficult, but at least you'll be able to look at some of the percentages, have some of that piece within that. As of October 1st last year, we had seven, that count that we have, there's 17,635 students enrolled with us. 288 students accounted for the 476 referrals, so that's 1.6% of our student enrollment. Okay? Obviously, the 98.4% of the students did not get a referral or have received a referral. 75 students, or 0.4% of the enrollment, received two or more discipline referrals. So when you go back to what Dr. Pakel said about, about some of that relationship piece, that's where the next number comes in. 213 students, or 1.2, had one referral. Does it always mean it's bad if somebody got a behavior referral? Absolutely not. Because if you get that one referral, maybe that relationship is built. And some of that help is, I mean, people make mistakes. You mean, you speed, right? Have you ever picked up speeding? That's like a behavior referral, you know? Maybe you've learned from it. I'm not going to ask, I'm not going to ask to take names or anything, but...
Mr. Ling, excuse me, could you explain what Level 2 means?
Yep.
And then what a referral is?
Yep. So Level 2 referrals are those referrals in our student handbook that would be administrative, principals would handle. Level 1s would be teacher or classroom behaviors. Does that help?
So a Level 1 might be that a student, this, I'm making this up, but, you know, running in the hallway, which, you know, isn't a, a Level 1. That's kind of a dumb example. But just a lower-level situation that a teacher is going to respond to.
Horseplay.
Horseplay.
Could it be Level 1?
The teacher reteaches. The teacher works with the student. Level 2 is maybe something that could be suspendable, that requires an administrator to intervene.
So the referral is the student gets referred to the office?
Right. And not every Level 2 is a suspendable offense. Some considerations also taken, that you'll see this information as we go a little bit within the numbers, is free and reduced lunch students and English learners, special education students, continue to refer to disproportionately to their enrollment. That continues to happen for us. Students who identify as black, multi-race, Hispanic also are continuing to be referred disproportionately to their enrollment. Students who have identified as black and Hispanic were referred, referred at a lower level disproportionality than they have in the past. Okay? Is that something that we can be celebrating? Maybe. But it could also be just the timeframe that we've had. I don't think it's time to start going here. All the stuff we've done is working. I don't think we're ready to, to go that direction yet. But it's, it's, it's had a decrease, which is always good. Our actual district data, I can't see that far, so I've got it up here, too. As you look, I would not focus as much on the raw numbers that you see, but more at the percentage level, that second row, in comparison to other years, if you want to compare. Our raw numbers are just too low. As you see, if you compare those numbers, you do see the decrease in the areas that I talked about. But you also, if you want to compare, like, if you want to just look at the black population, the number, the percentage of referrals is 30%, while our enrollment is 14.9%. So that's what that disproportionality is that I'm talking about. The closer those two numbers would be together, be less disproportionate. And then further along, as we, we talked about this also earlier, that I talked about our free and reduced lunch and, and special ed and LEP students. Just a reminder, our special ed students, so when we talked about the number of students that we had in school this year, you know, we think back, we really only had K-12 kids in, in, in the month of April and May, we had elementary throughout the year. But remember, we did have some programs of high school kids, especially of high school kids, in the high schools for a longer period of time. There were some there in the fall. Sorry, I won't be able to name all those programs for you, but there was some of that piece of it. And you look at our referrals, the other piece, too, if you add up those numbers, 300, 223, and 655, that doesn't equal 476. Okay? So understand that a free and reduced lunch student could be also special So understand that a free-to-do lunch student could be also special ed, could also be LEP. So a student could be in there counted more than one time. You look at our percent of referrals and our referral rate, again, the closer that number is, the more, just less disproportionate that it is. If you compare the numbers to last year, within that, we've had an increase in both our free-to-do lunch and our special ed students. Referrals by level, also remember, as I just said, we were, elementary was in the school longer. And so their referral rate, or Level 2 rate, was higher than the secondary sites and was an increase over last year. And I'm guessing that is because of just being in school longer or more time with that part of it. Most common offense referrals, this has been unchanged, I think, since I've come back to this role, has been physical aggression, interruption to learning, and fighting. Those have been our three. Interruption to learning environment and fighting have switched this year. And the reason for that part of it, sorry if you want to go back to that slide, the reason for that part probably would be we're just weren't in school as long. Do I anticipate that number to change next year or this upcoming year? Probably so, for that one to come. But again, physical aggression has been the number-one thing. Even when I was principal at Jefferson, that was our reason we had our most Level 2 offenses from that. And you'll see that with our suspensions coming as we go. Removals, suspensions and admin removals. So we were talking about Level 2s, okay? Those behaviors that may result in some discipline. A Level 2 may not result in a suspension, it may result in a conference with a student, may result in a phone call home, a conversation, a relationship, really think that's what the Level 2s may happen with. A suspension, as you know, is removal from school. An admin removal is something that we've used if it's for less than a full day. So an example is, I'm a 10th grader at Mayo High School, and an 11th grade colleague and I have had some issues throughout the day. Not a suspendable offense, but as we've talked to our parents, it's probably a good idea if we go home for the day. We're not suspending them. We don't, it's not a suspension, but we need something to have that they're going, so we're calling it admin removal. It's not for a full day, it's for a partial of the day. We still track that because we don't want to hide anything. In the past, we may have, we didn't always track those things, and I think it was a way for us to not count some things suspension-wise, but we're looking at, we want to be transferred with it, here's, here it is, we have it. As you look at our numbers, I was a little nervous on putting some of our numbers out there because I don't want to have anything to be identifiable with anybody. And that's where you see, if you remember years in the past, we had, I went through every school, I had Bamber Valley's information up there, I had Falwell, everybody. I didn't do that this year because I think we could have some, we could get it all the way down with some identifiable things. I have that, all that stuff for you if we want to talk through it, but I'm just afraid if we get too deep into that, we won't have it. So as you look at our suspension data and administrative removal data, compare the percentages again, okay? White went up, multi-race stayed similar but went up, Black went down, Hawaiian indifferent with, really with it, Hispanic stayed similar, Asian went down, and there was an increase in American Indian, even though it's two students, it's still an increase within the Referrals to law enforcement. The question came up, I don't remember how Jackie and I had the conversation with it, but it was, we had referrals to law enforcement this year? Yep, we did. We had, within the whole school year, we had referrals to law enforcement. We had a total of 17. One in the elementary for a weapons violation, not a major thing at all, but it had, we reported it, so we put it in there. In secondary, we had 16, and not all of them were possession of alcohol, drugs, tobacco, but that was the most common reason that we had within those. Typically, that is our most common reason that we have referred to law enforcement. I do, if you want to back up one thing, please. 14 of these students accounted for all the referrals to law enforcement, that's 0.08% of our enrollment. And we don't know what, who was charged, we don't have that data, we don't get that data right now of all 17, we're, all 17 charged. It's just, we refer this to our SRO and give it to them that way. There's our breakdown by race. In comparing the percentages, we had a large increase in White. We did not have any multi-race, students identified multi-race. We had a decrease in Black, and our others stayed very similar. American Indian had increased, but it was because of one student within that part of Continuing efforts. This is just kind of ongoing things that we have. A lot was within that MDHR report that we'll continue to do. You see some of the staff development things listed within that. The two in the bottom ones is two that I'm actively involved in, our office is actively involved with, meetings with the office of elementary, secondary view of that data. We didn't do that as much, obviously, last year as we have in the past where I've gone out and we've gone down to each student that's being referred and why, you know, this student's got 10 office referrals, you know, what are we doing with this student that has 10 office referrals? And it may be, you know, we're still building that relationship with them, and here are the 10 things they're working on, and here's what we're trying to do. But in those 10 office referrals, not a one is a suspension. Well, there's some positives in that piece because they're still working through that part of it. And he hasn't had a 10, he hasn't had an office referral since October, you know, and we're talking in January. So we have to look at some of those pieces within that. And that's where I can answer some of those questions that we had, you know, in the past where Mr. Munius and I would sit down, he'd ask me questions, "Why is this number like it is?" And so I'd be able to give some of those answers. We didn't have those meetings this year because of the pandemic, but we did go out in June and met with every building our office did and reviewed some of that data and some of their practices. And the other piece is something new that's coming within ours is our school resource office inclusion, you know, as far as some of those district trainings, the conversations we have with them, some of that part of it. And then finally, some other pieces that are within our offices, that behavioral learning community, which I've been on, I think I've been to one meeting, two meetings maybe, and maybe Jackie can speak more about that. Our consistency with office referral forms across, that's something we continue to work on, even as principal at Jefferson, we're working through that part of it to make sure that we were being, that we were the same throughout. But it may not be the same, you know, at Jefferson as a fourth grader, as it would be for Kellogg as an eighth grader and a 12th grader at JM. There might be some different things within that part of it. Standardized responses to those behaviors, district oversight, suspensions that fall outside of the outline. So an example is, if it's something that we would, that's not one of our things that we would normally suspend for, and somebody wants to suspend for that, we'd have that conversation within our office of, you know, can we continue to have that, you know, is that something we suspend for, or let's talk more about that. And then the other piece that we have to talk through, sometimes our office is able to take out some of that emotion. If you're in that emotion, think about if you're a parent and you're trying to work with your child and it's just not getting through, and you're getting upset and there's some emotion, our office can help with some of that emotion, too, and take that out of it and go, "Okay, let's talk through this and where are we really at?" And we do that part of it. And then collection response to our student perception data, which Dees Moody will work through, and I think we're going to talk a little bit more about this, even with our student school board, about discipline this year and some of that SRO piece, and how students are disciplined throughout that.
So maybe if I could just highlight, of these bullets, there are a number that were executed right at the beginning of our work with MDHR, like standardizing the office referral form and further defining in the student handbook the, what the infractions were and what, and making sure that people understood the behavior handbook. So there are a number of things that happened right at the beginning that we continue to do each year that became just natural parts of our operation. The Behavior for Learning Committee, I think one of the board members may have had a question about that. Last spring, a group of administrators came together and sort of organically identified that we needed to make sure that our students and staff understood the equity belief statements that you, the board, had set forth for us, and that we felt a strong pull to address concerns that you addressed through the government speech policy. And in that conversation, that work group changed from, I think, five leaders to probably 40 people that are involved in this now. It's really a temporary group that came together to do some work around various areas, and one of them that I happen to be closely aligned with is the Behavior for Learning. We started calling it Discipline in the Discipline Committee, and the group said, "Let's call it Behavior for Learning, like grading for learning," in a more positive, a more positive avenue. And so the work that this group has done, and I have to point out that it's not just principals or cabinet members, we have equity specialists, we have counselors, we have teaching-level staff that are joining into this conversation. It's the first time that I've ever experienced this, where it's a, you know, a variety of people coming together with different perspectives to talk about discipline. And the first thing we said is, we know that some buildings have really effective ways of looking at their data, of looking at their data they collect on Level 1s and 2s, and being proactive about that data, both from the building perspective and down to the kid level. I noticed that a student is having a lot of referrals at 2:00. What's happening at 2:00 that's causing that? And what can we do at 1:45 to intercede and help change the course of the day for that student and make it positive? So Chris and Kim in elementary and secondary did an inventory of every school. They went out and had, not just like fill out this survey, but they had a face-to-face conversation with the admin team. What is your process for collecting your data? What's your process for analyzing your data? How often do you get together? Who's on your team to look at your data? What are some of your strategies that work really well to proactively work with students to prevent situations from happening? And we've collected all that data, that was in June, and so we're coming back together with the Behavior for Learning team, and their goal is to take a look at the best of the best ideas and package that up and make a recommendation to buildings that if you don't have a tight process, here are, here's how buildings that are really seeing some progress are responding to behavior. So that is just one tiny piece of the strategies that we're using that really came from the work with MDHR. I just wanted to highlight that one because I think it's a really active way of supporting and collaborating and taking the best ideas and putting them in action. So I think we can...
Yeah, if I could, Director of the Board, just briefly jump in before I ask Will Ruffin to jump in. And thank you, Jackie and Chris, for that overview. It really shows very good system work being done over time, though I want to really caution us in reaching many conclusions about the trends that Chris described, partly because of last year was a year unlike any other. Second, because it's at least three years before it's a trend, ideally four or five is actually getting serious. So year-to-year change can be noise. So, leaving that aside, I think the decision that this board made in creating its equity policy, in creating the position that Will now occupies, to some extent, I don't know, in choosing me for this position, is to build on that really good system work, but now lean in more explicitly to issues of race and equity. And so that there now is this next level of saying, "All of that is very good work, and how do we actually acknowledge those disparities?" And just before I turn it over to Will, there's a free test on the web that's affiliated with Harvard called the Implicit Bias Test that you can go do, and it asks you to react to various fast screens. It's scientifically highly validated. And I say, as a white man who was married to a wonderful African-American woman and has raised Black and multiracial kids who identify as Black, the last time I took it, I came out with significant bias in my responses to images that were there. And I've done it before, but I did this recently. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean I would act on that bias. There's a real question of, what happens in your brain, does it influence what you do? Because I would hope I would check my reaction, but in that test, which is rapid cognitive stimulation, it's getting at recessed things in all of our brains. And so I just want to sort of, before I turn it over to Will, just add that this is positive, that we're now building on this good work and being willing to also lean into sort of the next level of it, which is going back to those questions of, not saying we don't have staff in our schools who want the best for all kids, but there are some things that we need to lean into going forward. I asked Will if he'd be willing to talk about how he has handled personally, as an educator in the district, some of these issues of student engagement and behavior, and then any early thoughts he has. He is as deep into his job as I'm into mine, which means he knows Rochester Public Schools very well. I don't. But he's about as far into his very important new position as I'm into mine, so not putting him on the spot too much for the discussions that I know we'll be having in the coming months of a larger district strategy. So, Mr. Ruffin.
Thank you for that. Dr. Pekel asked me to talk about discipline tonight, so I wrote a book. I do have a few thoughts. But I do want to start with, when I first started my journey in education, just about 15 years ago, when I was doing some student service hours in a kindergarten classroom, and I asked the teacher, Mr. Monty McKay, "What is your system for discipline?" He responded, "I don't have one." I couldn't understand that. I said, "What do you mean, you don't have a system for discipline?" And he said, "I don't need one. I get to know my students, my students get to know me, and we all understand what is expected of us in the classroom." So I took that, and that was basically a foundation that I used in the classroom when I became a teacher. Get to know the students, like really get to know them. So this term of authentic building relationships, that was something that I was trying to do from the beginning. It's not just a term for me. And when I did things like that, I noticed I didn't have many discipline problems in the classroom at all. And when I did, it just meant that that student got to spend more time with me over lunch. But it wasn't sending them to the principal's office or referring them. It was just sitting down and having lunch and getting to know them and asking the question, "What prompted that behavior?" That wasn't the first question out of my mouth. This was after sitting and talking about whatever, whatever they're into, be it sports or games they like to play on the playground or whatever. We have to see the students as humans first. Because if we can do that, I think that starts to chip away at our biases and how we respond to students in different situations. So after getting to know the students, then I could say, "Hey, you know we can't do that, right? So how can we do this differently next time?" And now the students respond to me differently because they believe that I see them as people. So throughout my career as a 12-year teacher in fifth grade, rarely had any discipline problems. And I could really say it starts with authentically building relationships with our students. And that's what I want all of our staff to do throughout Rochester Public Schools. We say it a lot, but I think we actually have to do that. So the discipline data, in my opinion, begins way before the student commits that action, way before they're sent to the principal's office. It can often start with the classroom environment. Is it welcoming for that student? Because if it is, I may act differently than an environment where I'm not really welcome. So it starts way before then. So when I think about the OCR report that came out years ago, I think it was a blessing in disguise. I say that because there are many actions that have been had by teachers to students for a long time that we weren't really talking about. But that report forced us to talk about them. We have to have those conversations. We have to do something about these actions that are occurring in our schools. And that led to policy-level action like creating equity statements for our entire school district. For those equity statements to come to fruition, we have to live those words that are on the paper and on our website. They can't just be there. It has to be what Rochester Public Schools is about. So one thing that I would suggest is for us to increase our professional development around anti-bias training for all staff, not just educators, but anyone who has any contact with students should be involved in these trainings. I think the trainings are also important because we have different types of people who are in our buildings. And I say that because I was often one of the only or the very few Black teachers in a building. And I know how I was treated or not treated when I was in the buildings. So the training is not only for our interactions with students, but it's also for our interactions with each other. Being inclusive is not just restricted to the students. How could be, how can we be more welcoming to the staff, to everyone in our building? And that's what the training is for. It's for all of us. Another thing that I would suggest is to look into different types of ways to discipline students. So look into restorative practices. Look into peer conversations. How can we sit students down with each other and say, "This is how this student felt when you had that, when you did that action?" And get students to actually start to talk to each other. Because if we can start that... Because if we can start that in elementary and then get that to high school, just imagine what our community would look like if we have adults who could actually have authentic conversations with each other. Another thing that I believe that we should do in this district is continue to recruit more educators of color. I think this is very important. Just think about how I felt being the only one in the buildings. Our students also have that same experience when they're the only one in their classroom. When they can go an entire K-12 experience and never have a teacher that looks like them, what message is that also sending to our students? Who is important when it comes to learning? Who is important when it comes to teaching and educating them? No one who looks like me, that's also a message. And the last thing I would like to say is, I would like to see us continue to build our employee resource groups. Over the last couple of years, we have taken off our employees of color resource group that was started by Martine Haglen a couple of years ago, and that's just been a support system for a lot of people. I now had a place that I can go to where I could tell my stories, and that group believed me. I didn't have to justify my feelings to anyone. They were there with open arms, and honestly, they shared stories of their own, and we bonded over that. So, we want to also think about how can we use the people in our district who have this lived experience to help our district grow for the better? How can we tap into different people? I think this time, this period that we're in right now is the perfect time for that. So, we also need to let our employees know, this employees of color group is one group. You can start a group for yourselves. How can we start an ally group? How can we start an LGBTQIA+ group? So, people can also have that support system within our school district. But more importantly, how do we get those groups to work together? Work together with our teachers, work together with our administrators so that we can make a more, a better and more welcoming environment for all of our students. Thanks for listening.
Madam Chair, this concludes our overview. We invite, you know, questions, reactions. Again, I want to thank Jackie and Chris and Will for their discussion. I will just say, when it comes to the kids who do get caught up in this disciplinary process, Chris's data shows us it's a relatively small number of students. If, it's not a, the stuff that Will described and Jackie described is an all-kids strategy, but the kids who are getting engaged is a relatively small number of students. We can have a strategy to understand what's happening with that number of students and take steps. So, one of the things that excited me about Rochester Public Schools is we're big enough to have wonderful diversity and systems, but we're small enough that we can actually look at that number of students, and I know we have been, and we could even lean in further, to really be understanding causes and then beginning to take the next phase of the work with solutions.
Thank you. And obviously, this is not the last time we're going to be having this discussion. We sort of made a commitment to our audience that we'd be done by six o'clock, so if we have time for a couple of quick comments, great, but we're almost on target that we can get finished by...
Madam Marvin?
Yes?
Can I request maybe that we continue this discussion on the next agenda, like put, the agenda item is continuation of this discussion so that we don't have to rush through the questions right now? Because I have things I'd like to talk about, and I don't want to feel like I need to...
Absolutely.
And my understanding is that we're going to be, this is going to be a regular thing, so if that works for you, and if that's right with you, we'll finish the board meeting and then we'll make sure...
Well, I'll just write down our thoughts really quick so we don't lose any of them.
Absolutely.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Ruffin, I am so glad that you're here and in this position, and I cannot wait to see all of the amazing work that you do in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just change that and just say, all the work that we're going to do in this district.
Yeah, all you.
This is not a I thing. This position is bigger than me. I also need to recognize that there are plenty of people in this district that was doing work before me. I'm just reaping the rewards of their hard work, so it's definitely a we, it's not an I, but thank you for the compliment.
You're welcome.
He's so good. Thank you, all of you. Moving on to eight point oh one, approval of bids for bid packages thirty, three F, three one A for the Century High School Pool Edition project. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pecel?
Dr. Marvin, I'm going to call Scott Sheridan, our executive director of operations, up to give you an overview, and I know he has a colleague he'll introduce to whom we owe a lot for good work.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, board members. Keon McWaters from Canute Construction is with me tonight. We're here to brief you on the approval of bids for bid package three F and thirty-one A for the Century High School Pool Edition. This is just the very beginning, these are two of the smaller packages, actually, but they're the ones that get us started off to get going on this project. Just to reiterate that, this is all referendum dollars, the referendum that was approved in November of 2019, the one hundred and seventy-one point four for the four buildings, secure entries, auditorium, and then the nine point five million for the pools, along with the decommissioning of the middle school pools. Canute Construction was hired as our CMA in January of 2020, and they oversee all of our projects, the referendum projects. On the twenty-eighth of January of 2020, the school board approved the hiring of WSN, the architect that's designing the pool. On July sixth, the first bid package went out for the pool, and on July fourteenth, we had a pre-bid meeting where any interested contractors could come, and we'd go through each site and the documents with them. On July twenty-eighth, the bid packages three F and thirty-one A were opened and tabulated. We received one bid for each. On the three F, which is the architectural and structural precast concrete, Wells Concrete was the loan bid, and their amount was one million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And then the thirty-one A, the earthwork and utilities package, we had one bid as well, and that was from Carl Bolander and Sons, and that amount was seven hundred and four thousand dollars. There weren't any other alternates for these two bid packages, and if perchance we get approval tonight, we'll be starting digging as soon as we possibly can.
Board members, questions?
Second?
It's been moved to action and seconded. Been moved to action and seconded. Any discussion? On favor of moving it to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is now an action item. If it resolves, the school board of Independent School District 535 approves the bids from Wells Concrete for work described in trade package three F in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, and Carl Bolander and Sons for work described in trade package thirty-one A in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand dollars, for a total of two million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for the Century High School Pool Edition Project Bid Package Number One.
Move approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board members, before we adjourn, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we adjourn, any other business you want put on the future agenda? I have the note about bringing back the team we just listened to. All right? Then, it is five fifty-nine...